We all rise to the last of the invitation. And Commissioner Rafalski in the pledge.
Pray with me. Father God, we thank you tonight for your goodness, your mercy, and your love. Lord, we thank you that we are so blessed to live in this wonderful place, to be able to work and serve. And, Lord, we ask your special blessing on our world tonight, Lord, as we have such a challenge between Russia and Crimea. Lord, we pray that sound minds will prevail there and that peace will prevail and that we won't just have a horrible conflict. Father, we pray for our nation, we pray for wisdom for our leaders, and we're faced with so many challenges in this country, and we pray for each and every one of them, that your divine mercy and your wisdom would surround each situation. Father, we pray tonight for our county, for our city. We pray for this meeting and for the decisions that we make that influence the lives of our citizens that live here. Father, we pray that everything we do tonight would bring honor and glory to you, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open tonight's meeting with a public comment period. I believe we only have one person who signed up, Mr. Julian Smith. If you'll come forward. Public comments are limited to five minutes, sir.
Turn on my timer here. I'm Julian Smith. I've lived on St. Simons, off and on since 1992. I should explain to others, the reason I don't rise to pledge allegiance is that I pledged in the first grade. I kept that pledge. I've never pledged again, and I resent being asked to pledge or expected to pledge, though others were free to pledge. Later, I will explain at another public hearing why I do not rise to pray. I could not attend the Casino Theater Town Hall regarding the SPOSP on February 9th. I understand it was well-attended, but I couldn't be there because I was at a family event in another state. But I watched it twice on the archival video, and I noticed that despite the fact it was announced on the county calendar that members of the public would have five minutes to speak, that Commissioner Fendig arbitrarily reduced that to three minutes. And had I been there, I would have risen in protest. And I am sad that no one at that meeting said, oh, wait a minute, this looks like bait and switch to me. It said we'd have five minutes, now you say we have three. Well, that's the tourism industry for you. Anyway, the commissioners spent a total of 35 minutes talking, which left only 25 minutes for members of the public. And I'm glad there were people there who did speak, and some of them spoke very well. I was at the Seapalms meeting on 24 January when Commissioner Fendig spent 30 minutes on a slideshow and defending roundabouts and his scheme for a new toll. Really, that meeting should have been devoted to the upcoming SPOSP, and I hope that soon the county commission will provide an early version of what they would like to see on the SPOSP. I know you don't have to have it done until this summer, the final list, when you have a resolution, but I think it would be really a good idea if you let the public know what you plan, especially on St. Simons. I am partly responsible for the defeat of the 2021 SPOSP. I had some help from people like Jane Fraser and Jeff Kilgore and a few others. I spent only about $4,000 or $5,000 on advertisements and radio ads opposed to that SPOSP. I don't want to have to do that again, so I want you to come up with a good SPOSP. Now, at your February 24 Town Hall at Oglethorpe Park, Commissioner Fendig, I hope you will not speak other than to welcome the public, let the public speak, and if there's a little gap between the time people come up to speak, please don't do what you did at the meeting in February. That is, there was a 30-second pause, no one came up, and you devoted seven minutes to something, and you had a slideshow prepared. You were ready to take advantage of a moment of silence. Why am I coming to you with this? Why am I the only person speaking here tonight? It's because I think a lot of people don't believe you will listen, and they don't want to come out. Now, because I ran for the county commission seat now held by Commissioner Rafalski in 2016, it was held by Coleman then, and because I ran for the at-large seat held by Commissioner O'Quinn in 2018, and because I ran for the seat now held by Commissioner Fendig, because I was on the ballot, I was on the ballot before the other candidates won their runoffs, et cetera, I represent thousands and thousands of people who voted for me, and I feel some responsibility to them, and I've just spent my five minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, thank you. It's good to see you here. I know you haven't been here very often in the last few months, so it's good to have you here, and I'd say it's not a Board of Commissioners meeting without you speaking, so thank you for your time.
Don't expect me to be here all the time.
We won't.
I'm getting old, sir.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight. As we move forward, is there any additions to the agenda, tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion to add a couple items to the agenda. I move to add item number 6.1 to the published agenda to consider rescinding the board's approval of the right-of-entry agreement with Home Depot on August 19, 2021, and that approval of the revised right-of-entry agreement with HD Development of Maryland to allow construction for the Altama Connector-Spur 25 intersection project on property owned by Home Depot.
Second. We have a motion and a second to add item 6.1 to the agenda. Any other discussion, commissioners? If not all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to move to add item 10.1 to the published consent agenda to consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Brunswick-Glen Joint Water and Sewer Commission, JWSC, to rent the former animal control facility.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Neal to add item 10.1, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion, commissioners? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes 7-0. Item number one, recognition of fire rescue employee Jake Jones. Chief Jordan?
And while you're coming up, Chief Jordan, it sure is good to see all our men in uniform, men and women in uniform here tonight. Thank you for what you do.
To give you a little background as to what has occurred since the onset of COVID, we have seen a greatly increased call volume, the hospital is overworked, extended offload times, there are many times that we're stacked up and we may be out of ambulances with two or three at the hospital. One day in particular, on January 11th, firefighter paramedic Jones excelled. He did something that was absolutely phenomenal to us. He got to the hospital with his patient in an ambulance. There were five ambulances stacked up at the hospital. That's six of our seven, and the seventh was on a call. Firefighter paramedic Jones took his ambulance out of service, took the cot, located hospital cots, and he unloaded every patient that we had and took charge of those patients until the hospital staff in the ER was able to care for them. Jake, just phenomenal. I can't say anything else. It put us back in service, it assisted, it increased the safety of the county. And in recognition of your exceptional service to Glen County Fire Rescue and the citizens of Glen County, on January 11, 2022, the extreme impact of COVID on our healthcare system stressed our EMS services to the point of near failure. The record call volume and extended offload times caused the department to endure extended response times and delays in patient care. Arriving at the hospital with a patient, firefighter paramedic Jacob Jones observed five ambulances waiting to offload their patients. Jones took it upon himself to down his ambulance and acted as the receiving facility, taking over care for all patients, allowing the other five ambulances to return to service. Jake, your decisions and actions reflect well on the department, the county, and our profession, and I would like to present you with two things. This is our 50th anniversary EMS coin. Very few of these have come out. This is the 50th anniversary of Glen County having an EMS service. I would like to present you with that. An individual citation for your outstanding service.
Thanks, sir.
And a commendation. A letter is in your file, and I appreciate everything you did.
Thank you very much.
We're proud of you.
to the Glen County Police Department. Tonight in our audience, we have former chief Carl Alexander's widow, Susan, his daughter, Grace, and son-in-law Bryce here to extend a gift to the police department that has been given in the memorial of their husband and father. So Grace, if you'll come forward and come to the mic and tell us a little bit about what's going on.
Hello, everybody. I'm Grace. Around this time last year, our dad, or my dad, Carl Alexander, was sworn in to return to the Glen County Police Department with a willingness to do whatever he could to positively impact the department. His plans were to use his wisdom and experience for a period of leadership. Maybe a week after being sworn in, he was admitted to the hospital. From his hospital bed, he was still making phone calls, eager to start his new job. Carl went to the complex shortly after he was released from the hospital. It was one of the last things he did that he was most excited about and proud of. He loved the Glen County Police Department, law enforcement, especially local, and he loved this community. When he passed away and arrangements were being made, it was obvious where he would have chosen people to donate in lieu of flowers. The Carl Alexander Memorial Fund began with law enforcement plans, and donations grew. The fund is being maintained by the Communities of Coastal Georgia Foundation. October 21, 2021, the Two Ways Sport Fishing Club hosted a memorial fishing tournament where a portion of the proceeds also went to the fund. It is our intention to continue the memorial fishing tournament annually as a standalone fundraiser planned for October 22, 2022, at Blith Island this year. The mission statement for the Carl Alexander Memorial Fund reads, "The Carl Alexander Memorial Fund is a nonprofit organization created to financially support local law enforcement in ways typical funding is unable. It is named after a man whose mission in life was to serve and protect. The men and women of our law enforcement agencies work together for common goals of creating peaceful and protected environment for the residents of Glen County. All money earned will be donated to those who are currently backing Carl's mission for the betterment of our community. Thank you for supporting a purpose to which Carl Alexander dedicated his life." While money can't replace the wisdom and dedication Carl intended to give to the county police department, we think he would have had similar excitement to last February swearing in for this grant to be presented today in his honor. We would like to formally thank all local law enforcement for your support and assistance, especially last April. The demonstration by his peers and the celebration of Carl's life was something of which he would have been immensely proud. It is our hope that we can continue to make an annual donation to local law enforcement through the Carl Alexander Memorial Fund. So tonight's check of $15,000 is being presented to the Glen County Police Department specifically for the K-9 unit in memory of Carl Alexander, with special gratitude to his bonus family for all they did for him and continue to do for others daily. Thank you.
He was a man who started his career with the police department in 1972, became chief in 1987, and retired in 2002. But even after his retirement, he was very active in our community, serving on the hospital authority board, several other boards, and civic organizations, and he was always one who, when someone needed a hand or someone was in trouble, he was there to offer it. He was certainly a great servant for our community. It's in that spirit that we have before us tonight, item number three, which is to consider naming the public safety building, the Carl Alexander Public Safety Building. Carl was instrumental in the design of that building. He laid it out, and he laid it out for the police department to grow into, which is probably getting pretty close to growing out of. But he did it because he loved the department. And when we needed him to come back a year ago, or two years ago, to serve as chairman of the police advisory panel, he was more than happy to do it. He told me specifically, he said, look, I don't know how much longer I have, but one of the things I want to put on my bucket list is to see this police department get back to where it was when I left. And I think that's a desire that we all have, is to make sure that our police department continues to rise to the level of excellence that he had it when he was chief. We asked him, even though we knew he was sick, though he didn't let on how sick he was, to come back and serve as chief, to advise us in regards to moving the department forward. Unfortunately, he passed away a couple months after he accepted that invitation from this board. We were sad to see him go, as was the family. This community was sad. There's very few people who, when they pass away, have the number of people who come out and mourn the way he did, and it speaks to the person he was. Susan, Grace, Bryce, I tell you this, thank you for your husband, thank you for sharing him with this community, and thank you for just this tournament and continuing to pour into the police department. Gentlemen, we have before us the opportunity to name the public safety building in honor of Carl Alexander. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I move that we make the public safety building to be named after Carl Alexander.
Second. We have a motion to name the public safety building as the Carl Alexander Public Safety Building by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Brunson and Commissioner Booker. Do we have any further discussion? If not, commissioners, please raise, please vote, and if you're in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, sir. That is, gentlemen, that passes 7-0. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We staffed did a pretty comprehensive search for a county EMA director. We staffed did a pretty comprehensive search for a county EMA director. We interviewed a number of candidates, including Mr. Leonza. Mr. Leonza was unanimous choice of our panel. Mr. Leonza is currently the emergency management and communication specialist at the Brunswick-Glen County Water and Sewer Authority. Prior to that, he served as police officer at College of Coastal Georgia. And prior to that, for four years, he was the emergency management director in Columbia County, Georgia. And also served in that same capacity with Montgomery County, and has also served as Area Five Field Coordinator with GMA. So his credentials, not only were his credentials outstanding, but also his desire and his excitement to do this job for Glen County. And Mr. Leonza is at the podium right now, sir.
Just ready to come on the team if you'll have me.
Okay. Mr. County Attorney, I believe we have to have a formal vote, is that correct? All right, gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept Mr. Leonza as EMA Director?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint Andrew Leonza as the Glen County EMA Director.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Neal to appoint Mr. Leonza to EMA Director, a second by Commissioner Rafalsky. Any further discussion, gentlemen? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Item passes seven zero. Thank you, sir. We look forward to your service. Item number five, consider approving a quick claim deed and estoppel certificate to the BPR Summit Drive LLC for property located at 101 Summit Drive, Brunswick. Mr. Worley.
Good evening, commissioners. Will Worley, Senior Assistant County Attorney. I've got an item for you tonight, a request from a purchaser of property on Summit Drive who, and their attorney is here via Teams, if you have any questions after I give my presentation. Rhonda, is there a way for me to get to the materials? I've got a couple of visuals to show y'all. What the board is being asked to consider tonight is the approval and signing of two documents. Yeah, there we go, the GIS map, or if I can take over, yeah. So Mr. Strength's client is purchasing 101 Summit Drive. What you have up there is the GIS map of the parcel in question. There's two things that they're asking you to approve. One is a quick claim deed. You can see at the bottom of the screen, at the bottom of the property there, there's a drainage ditch. And several years ago, 1994, the county owned about three acres just this side of the ditch that they deeded over to International Paper. And included in that deed was a reversionary interest saying that they had to do certain improvements in this ditch within two years where the property would revert to the Glen County. They did those improvements, which is included just grading and paving that ditch so that water would drain through it. We've looked, and it's been done. So the first ask is for a quick claim deed for the county to release its reversionary interest in the property that it conveyed to International Paper along that ditch line. The second request is for an estoppel certificate. So the county acquired property to the north of this parcel up here. Several years ago, 2014, also from International Paper. When they acquired that property, they also acquired an easement, an undefined movable easement across all three of these parcels here, so they could access their property up here. Right now, the county uses this sort of informal dirt road to maintain this ditch and to access this property up here. What the applicant is asking of you is that you sign this estoppel certificate, which says, one, the county still holds this easement, has not transferred it to anybody. And two, that it will agree to work with the purchaser of the property at the time this parcel was developed to establish a new route to get to that property to the north. So they would give us a defined easement to get there, a defined route to get there. Speaking with community development staff, county engineer, the way that would happen would be when they come in with site plan or something like that, staff would work with them to say, okay, you know, we need a route that allows us to get up here, that trucks and other equipment can get through, and make sure they work with them on the design so that there's no blockages or anything that would keep our equipment from getting up to the property to the north there. So those are the two asks for this item. One is approval of the quick claim deed to get rid of that reversionary interest, and then two is the estoppel certificate so that they can move forward with their closing later this month. I'm happy to answer any questions, and like I said, the representative of the buyer is, Joey Strength, is available by Teams if you have any questions for him.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Do we need this in form of two motions or consider it in one?
I believe that we have it in the form of one motion, just if you're inclined to approve it, just approval of the quick claim deed and the estoppel certificate.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the quick claim deed, estoppel certificate to BPR Summit Drive LLC for property located at 101 Summit Drive, Brunswick, Georgia.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Neal. We have any further discussion, gentlemen? No further discussion, we'll vote it. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes seven zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Item number six, consider approving the 2022 Glen Pay Plan as presented, including proposed salary matrix and job classification listing with anticipated implementation date of March 27th, 2022. Ms. Munson.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. All right. It's Mara Munson, interim CFO for Glen County, here to present the 2022 Glen County Pay Plan update. As you are aware, we hired a consultant to perform a market and compression pay study recently. They compared Glen County rates with other similar Georgia cities and counties for pay rates for our staff. Four calculations were completed for each employee, and each employee received the highest of the four calculations. Those calculations were the new entry salary that was at market rates, new entry salary plus longevity for some extra time that people had been here a little longer, current salary plus longevity if they were already above the market rate, or current salary plus a cost of living adjustment. These pay plan adjustments will include the fiscal year 23 COLA, and no merit will be provided for fiscal year 23. The reclassification, that part was edited off today because we are considering reclassifications at the request of several elected officials. So that will be determined during the budget process if it can move forward, and we'll get the updated language for attachment to that. This is an analysis of the cost by fund of what this pay study is going to cost. Keep in mind, these totals assume that we have no vacancies, and it assumes that everyone works their scheduled hours. It includes FICA taxes and pension contributions. So there's a breakdown by fund of what we would need to pay for the raises. As you know, each fund is meant to be self-supporting, and we try to have the fire fund, the police fund, EMS, all support their operations out of their own fund. So these are the increases to those funds. The total overall cost of this plan, assuming all vacancies are filled, is 5.46 million. This is a breakdown of the analysis of the raises by department. You have the major departments here, the total dollar value increases that each department is receiving, the number of positions in each department, the average increase for each department, and the percentage of the total increase. So as you can see, the police, sheriff, and fire, and EMS departments for our public safety are our top three recipients of these raises. This is a breakdown of our employees by type in graph form. Fifty-five percent of our employees are public safety, 12% public works, 6% courts, 3% community development, 10% recreation, and 14% is everybody else. And this is a breakdown of the salary increases by type. So 53% of the salary increases are going to public safety, 11% to public works, and so forth. This is a breakdown of the increases by pay grade. So as you move up the pay scale, most of the people in the higher ranges have either been here longer or are in management. So you can see that the vast majority of the raises are going to pay grades 5 through 19. When you get to pay grade 30, that is considered middle management. Then there's some supervisors in there between 24 and 30. But all of these folks down here that are receiving, the vast majority of these raises are the workers that are out there doing the hard work and the labor every day. And we wanted to make sure that you and the citizens know that these raises are not going to upper management. They are going to the folks out there that are doing the work. This is a breakdown of the increases by pay grade. Seventy-five percent of the total increases are going to employees currently making less than $50,000 per year. This is a breakdown of the years of service. So as you can see, the folks that have been here less years are receiving more of the pay distribution. And the reason for that is these people are the people that are being paid the least. And in order to bring these folks up to a market salary, we had to increase these percentages higher than people that had already been here for many years and had received raises. So we understand that there's been some frustration about this piece of the plan. And I just want to let everyone know that this plan is not perfect, but it is a great beginning and a good step in the right direction for the employees of this county. Just to let y'all know, we have some full-time employees that make $23,000 a year. Many of those employees have to work two or three jobs in order to support themselves and their family. That should not be. So although there are people that have been here a long period of time that are getting a smaller raise than the folks at the beginning, we believe that this is a fair plan. We believe that there may be some tweaks that need to happen as we move forward. As you know, we have done four calculations for over 700 current employees plus almost 200 vacancies. So this has been a tremendous amount of work to get to this point, but I want to let you know that this isn't the end. This isn't the last time you will see this. This is the fix right now, and there will be some tweaks as we go, but we don't expect any major tweaks in this plan. We have vetted this with our consultant, Scott Johnson. He's reviewed everything in detail multiple times. We have met with the department heads, and I want to personally thank Aura and Dwayne from HR for all of the work and input that they have put into reviewing this plan and getting it to a point where we could bring it forward for you tonight. So as you see here, we have 769 currently filled positions, and this is the raises that are going to those positions and the average increases. We have 90 vacant full-time positions and 83 vacant part-time and seasonal positions. And one of the reasons that it's so important that this plan gets approved, if you all are willing to move forward with it, is that, you know, in today's climate and today's market, it's very difficult to compete when you can go to Wendy's and get a signing bonus and make $15 an hour. So this plan actually brings our bottom pay up to 1425 an hour. It's still not 15, but it is a lot closer. What we have been in the past is where we're at now, our bottom pay is $10 an hour. This is a breakdown of our employee numbers by the years of service. Over half of our employees have been here zero to five years. Six to 10 years, 20%. And then here's the other breakdown. We have 21-plus years, 10% of our employees. Increase by years of service, 61% of the increases go into the folks that have been here zero to five years, six to 10 years, 18%, and on up. And again, the reason for this is the people who have been here longer, many of them are already making the market rate. They're already making well above the entry rate that was proposed by the consultant. So, you know, this is going to help us to be able to attract quality employees to fill our positions, and it also benefits all of our employees. Every employee that is a full-time or part-time employee, with the exception of a couple of contract people, will be receiving some sort of raise in this plan. This is the proposed funding for the plan for fiscal year 23. One of the directions that we received from you all commissioners was that, yes, this is important, and we need to take care of our employees, find a way to make this work without raising taxes. And this is how we're going to do that and how it's proposed to do that. The total annual cost, again, assuming all positions are filled, is going to be right at 4.5 million. We are estimating a 4.5% increase in our property tax digest. This is actually below the average of our last three years because I wanted to be conservative in this estimate. I didn't want to think that we're going to bring in more, and then there's a downturn. So this is a conservative estimate of 4.5%. Lost in accommodation excise tax, this is an increase over the current year budget that we expect. Again, this is a very conservative estimate. So you can see with those increases and the cost, we will be able to fully fund the cost of this plan out of those increases and have an additional 1.5 million at least left after those are paid for without increasing property taxes. This is proposed funding for the rest of this fiscal year. As you know, we're recommending implementation on March 27th payroll. So the full year cost, 5.4 million. The last seven and a half pay periods would be 1.6 million. We have had so many vacancies throughout the year in our staff that this is what we currently have in excess salaries. So we can more than fund this year's payment for all of the employees out of what we have in excess budget. We'll have to request a budget amendment to cover this. We will not have to request a budget amendment to cover this because we already have that money in the salaries budget. Implementation will take approximately six weeks, beginning on the March 27th pay period if this is passed tonight. The new pay matrix will start at 1425 per hour. Currently, our matrix starts at 1055 per hour. In current market conditions, funding of this plan is planned with anticipated revenues. I do highly recommend that we maintain 100 days of operations in each fund to protect against market downturns. If we see a recession that comes through like it did in 2008, I recommend that we leave some money in the undesignated fund balance for general fund. some money in the undesignated fund balance for general fund that would equate to 12 million approximately. But this would allow us to not have to do furloughs, not to have to cut salaries. It would pay for this, and it would allow us to continue operations. Pay changes will help fill the vacancies and help retain employees. Pay rate changes are part one of a three-part reset for Glen County. Part two is a personnel policy revision, and part three is organizational restructure. The goal of this reset is to attract and retain high-quality employees, reduce inefficiencies, and increase accountability. This is the recommended motion for your approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
To Mayor, from my perspective, I don't see that we have a choice. And I'm going to make a motion here in a minute, but I just want to applaud you and your team. I just, what an onerous task this was to go through the most detailed thing that I believe I've ever seen in my life and the speed to which you've done it. I mean, we brought this to the table, me and Mr. Chairman, a month ago, three weeks ago.
Well, it's something we've been working on for several months, but to refine it, Ms. Munson has worked night and day for the last month or so to be able to get it so that the employees can have a part of it done this salary year.
Well, the devil's in the details, and you've provided the details. And I just can't thank you enough, and I know that our employees in the county are appreciative as well for the yeoman's task to put this thing to bed. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the 2022 Glen County Pay Plan as presented, including the proposed salary matrix and job classification listing with an anticipated implementation date of March 27, 2022.
Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker, and Commissioner Neal. Gentlemen, any further discussion?
I would just like to add to what Commissioner Brunson has done. I can hear the fatigue in your voice from time to time when we talk, knowing how much time you dedicated to this project, working with you to bring this forward. I can't thank you enough personally, and I know that the employees in the Glen County pay system are appreciative as well. And I also want to thank my fellow commissioners for bringing this forward and giving us the opportunity to do something that has been needed for some time. Thank you, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the kind words, and I want to thank all of you for considering this. As you know, this has never happened in at least the last 16 years. I don't know if it happened before that, but I've had multiple people come to me and say, "I've been here 16 years. I've been here 14 years. Nothing like this has ever happened." Thank you. So thank you, commissioners, for being willing to entertain this. I know that it's never easy when you talk about raising costs that are taxpayer-funded, and I just want you to know that we truly appreciate you being willing to take this on.
One final thing I'd like to say, you know, this process began a little over a year ago in the police advisory panel as we were studying the pay compression issue. I think then Sergeant Collins Scoggins brought forward a plan that was reviewed in the PAF and eventually by this board. And this board began to recognize the issues that were happening in our county in regards to our employees' pay. As it was said last spring, we had the opportunity to try to continue to move this forward. I want to thank Chairman, at that time Chairman Neal, who sits here to my right as vice chairman. He was instrumental in making sure that it stayed front and center in front of all of us as commissioners. And most of all, I want to thank you, Ms. Munson. Thank you for your dedication to putting this together and really being the person who took it upon themselves to put it on your shoulders and move it forward. This could have taken several more months, but because of your dedication and the work that you did with Excellence Exceeded and the fact that they were willing to be there and were there to be able to look through all the information, gave us as commissioners the confidence to be able to bring this forward for a vote. So commissioners, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the pay plan, please raise your right hand. It passes 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Munson.
Thank you.
Firefighters, if you would like to, you're welcome to be dismissed. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but it's time if you'd like to be dismissed, you're more than welcome to.
Let's hope there's not a fire out there somewhere.
Okay. As they move out, we'll move on to item 6.1, which is added to the agenda, the rescension of the board's approval of the right-of-entry agreement with Home Depot on August 19, 2021. And that approval revised right-of-entry agreement with HD Development of Maryland to allow construction for Altama Connector Spur 25 intersection project on property owned by Home Depot. Mr. Worley?
Good evening, commissioners, and let me say thank you for the vote you just took. I really appreciate it. I know a lot of other employees do, too. As you may recall, this is related to the Spur 25 Altama Connector Intersection Project. Back in August of last year, y'all approved a right-of-entry agreement with Home Depot for us to do the work on their property. Unbeknownst to us, they had not yet talked to SunTrust and Chick-fil-A, who they share that one driveway with. I'm sure y'all are all familiar with that main driveway in and out of the Home Depot area. They've, over the months, have gone through and consulted with them and gotten the approval of both, but Chick-fil-A asked for one change to the agreement, and that change is the one you approved back in August restricted work on the driveways to the time period of 10:00 p.m., I'm sorry, 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. And, I'm sorry, let me go back. Restricted the work on the driveways from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., and they want to now change that to 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. So that'll be the time period during which they can do work in the driveway so that those driveways are open during business hours. So because Home Depot never signed the agreement, because you approved a previous version, we're asking you to rescind that version and then approve this revised version with that one change.
Okay, Mr. Worley. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Worley? Do we have a motion? Is it, will it be in one motion? Is that correct, Mr. Worley?
Yes, just to rescind the previous agreement and to approve this revised agreement with Home Depot.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll take a stab at that. I make a motion to approve, to recommend that we rescind the previous motion with Home Depot Development and to approve the new
Revised Agreement.
Agreement with HD Development.
Second. We have a motion to rescind the previous motion and to accept the new one. The motion was made by Commissioner Neal, second by Commissioner Rafalski. Commissioners, any further questions or discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda under general business for, except for any item a commissioner would wish to pull.
I'd like to pull number eight for a comment.
We have a motion, first of all, we have a motion by Commissioner Neal to approve the consent agenda with any items that any commissioners would like to pull. Commissioner Fendig, you'd like to pull item number eight, is that correct?
Yes.
And I think we need to pull item nine for discussion.
So we're going to pull item eight for discussion, item nine for discussion. Any other items, gentlemen? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passes 7-0. Item number eight, Commissioner Fendig.
All right. Are you able to even pull that plat up?
I think I have it for informational purposes. If IT can help me pull up the community development.
Yeah, I just want to be able to see if it's
Thank you.
Okay, well, just a comment.
There is the final plat, sir.
Right.
On the screen.
Okay, thank you. That, you know, this is, of course, this particular project's been in the process for a long, long time. I'm aware of that. But this is an example of R6 lots, 23 lots, with an access out on the Frederica Road. It's going to continue to add to the traffic on Frederica Road. And in any other category they were coming in, we have said that we stand opposed on R6 development. But this is just an example. I just want to make sure the public understands when this starts unfolding. Sadly, the owners of the property could have combined lots and done a more or less dense subdivision, and this is not a part of Magnolia Manor's facilities. This is a separate residential subdivision development. So anyway, that's it, and we can move on.
Okay, gentlemen, do we have any other discussions about this? If not, I'll need a motion to approve number eight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat to create a 4.925 acre, 23-lot subdivision at the western end of Leadbetter Avenue on St. Simon's Island, parcels number 04-01867 through 04-01877, 04-01909 through 04-01921, and 04-14248.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Booker. Commissioners, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have six, I'm sorry, and all opposed. Mr. Fendig opposed. The motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Fendig voting against. Item number nine. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. We just wanted to make sure this does meet all qualifications to be brought before you for consideration for a final plat. This is having a letter of credit to be surety for those construction improvements. The term of that bond is one year in the amount of $75,579.25. And the remaining improvements shall be completed within the term of this letter of credit unless an extension is approved by the Board of Commissioners. So we just wanted to clarify that is a one-year improvement time limit on this project, and if it's the pleasure of the board, the possible motion is on your screen.
Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Thompson regarding this issue? If not, do I have a motion?
All right, I make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approve application FP 4926 with a letter of credit with a term of one year in the amount of $75,579.25 drawn on the St. Simon's Bank and Trust. The remaining improvement shall be completed within the term of the letter of credit unless an extension is approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. Commissioners, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number 10, I'm sorry, that was on the consent agenda. Item 10.1 went on consent, is that correct? Rhonda? Okay, keep me straight over there. Move to public hearings. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments will be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. Item number 11, AB 4860 adjacent to 201 Ashantilly Avenue and 204 Anguilla Avenue abandonment. Mr. Andrews.
Commissioner Paul Andrews, county engineer. If we could just bear a minute, and we'll get the presentation up and running. If y'all can help, there's a PowerPoint, item number 11. Not real sure how to get there. It's not under community development, it's a separate PowerPoint item. Yeah, that's it. Perfect. Thank you. Commissioners, this is a request to abandon a portion of unopened alley right-of-way between Ashantilly and Anguilla in the Kings Terrace subdivision. Kings Terrace is located, this, the property shown is the airport, Kings Walk, is the first subdivision on the left. The unopened right-of-way is, it was originally created on the original subdivision to connect these two roads and is adjacent to a park that was also created on that subdivision. The two property owners that are making the request had the surveys prepared for the areas adjacent to them. This is the Ashantilly side, 25 feet of the overall 50-foot right-of-way is the request to abandon. In the field, there is the remnants of a driveway that is partially bisected by the center line of the alley. The Anguilla side, similarly shaped, is 25 feet of the overall 50-foot unopened right-of-way. This is a view of the, looking down the right-of-way, the portion of the right-of-way that's being requested to abandon from Ashantilly. The marker there represents the, this port, what is near the center of the existing right-of-way. That's the marker there. So this is the area requested to be abandoned. The white truck sits kind of straddling the center line of the existing unopened right-of-way. This is the similar shot from Anguilla side. This is the marker representing the center line edge. In the middle, where the two property corners, or the two properties meet, is this hedge line here. Right about buried in the hedges is where the center line of that unopened right-of-way is there. When staff went out for requesting comments on the use of that unopened right-of-way, there were no utility comments, meaning that there was no utilities that we solicited that had a desire to retain the right-of-way or easements in it. We did have a lot of public comments. I've listed for you the phone calls that were received at the county, some information about each one. Most of them were informational. We had opposition, has concerns, and would like some stipulations. If you do abandon, there was, the stipulations requested that if you do consider abandonment, Ms. Cooper requested that y'all look at somehow limiting the use of that property for additional These were the list of the emails that were received. Y'all sent out an email earlier today that had all these emails attached for your consideration. Fendig, any questions? A motion to move forward with the abandonment.
Oh, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, in our write-up here in the package, it doesn't say anything about 25 feet of the 50-foot right-of-way. The only thing that was depicted in any of this was all 50 feet. And I went over there today, John, by the way. But anyway, in fact, the recommended motion here is to approve the abandonment of a portion of the right-of-way, which is 50, but it's 25 feet.
That is correct. I'm sorry, that wasn't clear in the packet that went out to you.
I was also a little confused by the stakes over there. The The, the other question I have is, right now, egress and ingress to those two lots is cross, is across an abandonment. Is, am I wrong about that? Is that pretty much the case? I mean, was the car parked in the abandonment, I guess is my question.
The, i, if I may, one of the... Commissioner, the, the property that's, that fronts on Ashantilly has a driveway and they park along in this area and access their front door comes out, they have a
Right.
A, a walkway coming generally right out to here.
Into the abandonment.
Into the area where they're requesting the abandonment. Currently, it goes out to the unopened public right-of-way. That's, that's how these, the properties actually have frontage on this right-of-way. The, the other parcel, their property, their, their driveway comes in back here.
Commissioners, before we begin the public hearing, is there any more questions for Mr. Andrews?
Couple more.
Yes, sir.
I asked county attorney to, to verify. This is not like East Beach where we have been focused on abandoning easements over, in alleyways, over properties owned by adjoining owners. This, what is the ownership of that road and the park behind it?
These are, these are easement-style roadways, Commissioner. Similar to what we have in East Beach. In East Beach, we have, we have alleyways in between the properties. But you can, counties can also have easement-style roadways. So this is an easement that we do not own the roadbed. We just have a right to use it for road purposes. So when an abandonment happens, if it meets the criteria, typically half will revert to each adjacent property owner. Similar concepts, similar results. So the original, and to go back a little bit further in history, or quite a bit further, the original plat for these roads did not have an explicit dedication. But over the years, the county has worked these roads as well as the parks. So the conclusion in that is that these are easement-style roadways. So you can't abandon this. So that is why it goes half, 25 of 50 feet are going to the adjacent owners, being the applicants here. The other half, the other 25
Who owns title to the land?
The underlying, the, the applicant does.
Huh?
The applicants do.
The applicants own the roadway.
Quiet, quiet please.
If it, being an easement, the owners own to the center line of the, of the, of the right-of-way.
So why are we even, even to have this?
So the county is relinquishing, relinquishing its rights to use it for road purposes. So that's all the abandonment means in operation. You're abandoning the rights of the county to turn that into a public road. But you're not, you're not actually, you're not selling the land, you're not conveying the land. You're just acquiescing or relinquishing the county's rights to use it for road purposes.
But they own the land.
They own the land, to the center line. And now the park itself is, remains a county park.
Is county-owned park?
It's a county, it's a county park.
So who owns the other half of the easement road then?
It being a county park, the county is the adjacent party in interest, so the county retains that. It doesn't go anywhere.
Because I had an awful lot of calls and questions about that. And are any of the houses on either parcel non-conforming?
That I don't know.
Paul, you know?
I, I don't have that information as to whether they conform to the current zoning requirements for set, I assume it's setbacks.
Right.
I don't have that information.
You may have to turn to Pam there behind you. Pam? Sorry. Are any of the structures in these two properties non-conforming as far as setbacks?
I apologize, sir, I didn't look at that before I got here. I would need to pull up those building permits and I, and provide you that information. I don't have it this evening.
All right, let's, uh...
I think I've asked some of the questions that a lot of people have called and asked me and want to get clear on.
We'll go ahead and begin.
We can move ahead.
We'll go ahead and begin the public hearing portion of this abandonment. We'd like for those who are in favor of the abandonment, please to come forward and speak at this time. Those in favor of the abandonment, please come forward and speak. Please state your name for the record.
Michelle Beveridge.
Go ahead.
I have lived in King's Terrace for probably almost 20 years. And one of the applicants, I know for sure, has been there longer than me. That's John. And in my opinion, I think both of those houses are probably conforming. But I have no issue with them taking a half of that roadbed that is not going to be used. I think it'll make it a little easier for them to function on their property. And it's a very, very small slice, you know, compared to the, the piece that is a green space.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the abandonment?
Commissioners, good evening, John McQuig. I filed the petition for the abandonment on behalf of Mrs. War and myself. I'm the owner of 201, my wife and I are the owner of 201 Ashantilly. I lived previously at 220 Anguilla, across from another park. I've been familiar with these roads for a long time as doing legal work in that community for different landowners. We're asking for the abandonment of a road that has never been opened. The plat was recorded in 1943. It's an unnamed road, 50 feet in width, never been used by the county, never been improved by the county, never been maintained at all by the county. It has, the county has no use for this property. However, the King's Terrace subdivision does have use for that 25 feet. Commissioner Fendig, you mentioned that. The wonderful thing about the abandonment is it clears up that issue, and now the park grows slightly. Yes, my property line will grow slightly, Mrs. War's property line will grow slightly. We'll also be paying taxes on that slight increase, which will help y'all. I just saw the budget increase, or at least the pay increase, and that'll help a little bit. So the fact is, you have an unopened road, not used. We're going to continue to use it. My property, my wife's grandmother lived there for more than 15 years before she passed away. It's a drive for my property. It's benefiting me the entire time. Mrs. War, it benefits her. I would hate for you to open that road or have the opportunity to open that road. So I want to stop you from doing it. I want to let my little kids run from my front door out of the park and play frisbee or kick the ball or throw the football. And so by you abandoning that, it stops you from, in the future, opening it back up. So I'm, I'm just asking you to abandon it, there's a lot of good reasons. Here to answer any questions, and Philip Jackson, you prepared the survey, is here as well.
Mr. Jackson, want, wish to say anything on your behalf?
I'm Philip Jackson, Jackson Surveying, and I did the surveys of the property. I can answer any questions, but I would like to point out, we, we did survey the dwellings on both properties, and they, they do conform with the setbacks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this abandonment? Please come to the mic and state your name.
I'm Mary Virginia Keith, and I live in the neighborhood. And I just have gotten to know my neighbors quite well in, over the 27 years I've lived there. And we've just fought very hard to put a sign up in our neighborhood to make it look a little bit better. And I spent four weeks pulling the stupid vines out of the azaleas. So I really liked that little park right there in the front. And I think some of the concerns of the neighbors that spoke up and sent emails and called was because they feel that it was taking the park. But all in all, those two neighbors that face that park have basically have, need that to, to have a little privacy, you know, in their own space. And they're not taking the park. Because that part of it, the only people that drive on that old dirt road that's been there since the 40s is the recreation people that come in there and mow the grass. And that's pretty much, and I think these owners would prefer them not to do that too. So they're almost not, don't, they don't know where they're supposed to drive, so they end up driving on, in their, in their lot. So I think it's a good thing for everybody.
Any more, anyone else would like to speak in favor of the abandonment?
I'm against it, I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, when, when I, when it's time to speak against it, you can speak. And we're still, any, for anyone else on speaking in favor of the abandonment? If not, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. That portion is closed. Those who wish to speak in opposition to the abandonment, please come forward, state your name at the podium.
Don't work like it used to. Ron Ulenfeld is my name. And I've lived in that area, I was raised in that area, 201 Anguilla Avenue. That park has always been there, it's a park. If you'll look, I've got some film of, of what I took up in there. It was a road back then cut between Anguilla and Ashantilly. Over the years, no, they quit using that road as a road. Now it's a park, it was all the way from the front of King's Terrace, all the way to what we're talking about, to the back. On my iPhone, I've got it where I can show you exactly. I don't know how you'd get it up on the board. But I, if you look at what I've got here, you can plainly see... See if I can get the video coming up here now. That's my grandson. Let's see where it is. Would someone like to come up there and take this, so you can see what I'm talking about?
Rhonda, can, can you receive an email on that and project it, or? It'd take a few minutes. Okay, can, let's try it any, huh? Few more than a few minutes, okay.
What, what we're...
IT, is there any way we can email it up to you and you can put it on the screen? I'm, I'm sorry, could, could you help, Mr. Andrews, and help him and email it to RT?
Yeah, yeah. Let me get the video up there.
We'll go ahead and email it up, sir, and if you want to sit down and when you're, when we have it ready, you can come back up and speak, okay?
Okay, I don't know how to get back there.
While we're trying to get that up and going, anyone else in opposition to the abandonment?
Well, I'll speak.
Well, Mr. Smith, someone else is ahead of you.
My name is Jamie Durbin, and I also live in the neighborhood. I am very opposed to this idea, along with several neighbors who couldn't make it tonight. I think it, it is basically a land grab. I mean, Mr. McGill knew the property he was buying and what it entitled, when he bought it. He doesn't need any more land. The county, we know that it's not the park, that it's a county probably easement, from what I understood from Mr. Mumford. But what is the point in giving him free land? There are four parks in the neighborhood, and I live across from one of them. And I don't want the county to give me any easement or abandonment on that. People still use that road in their golf carts. They walk their dogs through there. And I don't believe that just because you come in and buy a property, that you should be able to get free land. We all know how, how much land is on St. Simon's. And it's not a good idea. And as far as it giving him more room for his front door or driveway, is he even going to live there, or is he going to Airbnb it? Which is what's happening to a lot of the land in that area. A lot of the houses in that area are being rented out. So, you know, I'm sorry, but he doesn't deserve the land. Nobody should just give away, we shouldn't give away land just because the homeowners are there and want it. Land should be paid for. And especially when other people surrounding the area don't want this to happen. It isn't about the park. Everyone uses the park. The, the four parks in the neighborhood were deeded to the county with the requirement that they not be built on, they not be sold, and that the county maintain them. So this easement, I'm sure, definitely butts up to the park. And I just think it's terrible that we could give these two people free land. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else like to speak in opposition? I think they're trying to get your video. Soon as your video's ready, he
Are they ready with the video?
Not yet.
It's trying to get there now, it's a video, it's a long file to go.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, right here in the corner, if you want to come speak.
I'm David Campbell, 11 Perth Court. I'm a 38-year property owner, resident of King's Terrace. I live around the corner from this abandonment proposal. I adamantly oppose this abandonment. Number one, the county has not ceased to maintain it. They maintain the parks and they maintain the road right-of-way with the exception of when they can't. The house that has been recently purchased at times have had two boats and multiple vehicles blocking the roadway, so the public could not use it. You know, I used to walk my dog and ride my bicycle through it. However, over the last year and a half, two years, it's been impossible to do that without weaving in and out of parked vehicles. You know, the property owners have basically, you know, just taken the property, you know? I have called Parks and Rec, I've called police, you know? It's, it's basically a land grab. You know, I am very, very opposed to it. You know, there's a question of ownership on the parks because of the way the subdivision... I bought my house from the original owner who owned it from the military. And he explained a lot of things to me that probably aren't written down, and I wouldn't know otherwise. But these parks were originally meant for the enjoyment of the children of the military who lived in the base housing that comprises King's Terrace. You know, I cannot see ceding ownership of that property for the financial benefit and private use to a property owner. I live across from a park, you know, are we gonna, can I have that? I just, I don't understand. You know, I came in at the tail end of this, I was out of town on family emergency for two weeks, and I came back and saw the signs, and I only had one day to do my research and prep for it. So I'm not as well-versed as I need to be. However, again, I am adamantly opposed to it. If anything, you know, the abandoned road right-of-way should be made part of the park.
Thank you, sir, are you, you read the comments?
I guess that's it.
Yes, sir, thank you, anyone else in opposition? Please come forward. Yes, sir, we're getting your file ready. We'll let, we'll let him know, Mr. Smith. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, you're welcome.
Hi, my name's Alicia Cooper, I live on Anguilla Avenue, and we are full-time residents now. Bought our house five years ago, and we love King's Terrace. And the reason we chose it was the kind of hometown, small neighborhood feel over there, partly being you enter at this beautiful park. And honestly, until last week when the signs went up, I was shocked to find out that that easement was not part of the park. Everybody has been enjoying that piece of land as part of the park. And the history there being, that neighborhood was built, built for naval airmen, 1942, 1943 era. And the original And the original hand-drawn plat shows that park and that roadway. So many of us believe the original founders and originators of that land and developing it was that right-of-way was public use, the park was public use. And if it's going to be abandoned, it should be abandoned to the park and to the people that live there and become part of the park. I don't know what that process is legally. As far as that being owned by the county, that park, after my very nice and congenial conversation today with Paul Andrews, that park land, I did not believe, my understanding was not belonging to the county, that it was part of the neighborhood. Now, who owns that? The originator of that? Apparently, that needs to be title searched because there's no actual original owner on that. But as far as adjacent and abandoned roadway being relinquished to adjacent properties, why couldn't that property be the park that it is relinquished to? In this time on St. Simons, where it's just being bought up by the minute, and green space being so desirable now, I would think that it would benefit more of the neighborhood rather than just two people. It would benefit more of the neighborhood and the public to relinquish that land to the park space, as it has been currently enjoyed. That being said, if nothing else tonight, I would move or hope to ask for a deferment of a decision, because so many people in the neighborhood, even up to yesterday, were saying, what are these signs? What's this for? People thought it was some public auction of property. Nobody knew what it was. And a lot of people don't call and find out the facts. There's a lot of misinformation among neighbors, he said, she said, and this is a really nice guy, so you should just not be opposed to this. Well, guess what? We are hopefully all really nice people and neighbors, but I personally, and many of us, just want what's best for the neighborhood and not for two adjoining pieces of property. So I am against this, and at least hope that this can be a deferred decision until there's more information and title information for that park. So thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I would like to speak now, if that video was not ready. I'm Julian Smith, and I think it would be appropriate to defer this item to the next meeting. Mr. Andrews said that you have comments offered by, sent to Mr. Andrews, but they're not attached to the report available to the public. I went to the report. There are no emails, no information about people in the neighborhood who are opposed or supportive of this. I have a personal interest in this. In 1946, my father brought me here, the summer of 1946. He had come back from the Navy, and one of his Navy buddies from the Pacific had been flying out of the little airport and had left his family in King's Terrace when he was reassigned to the Pacific. So I spent weeks in King's Terrace with this family, a couple of kids, a cute little girl, and so on. So Mr. Andrews has written in the report that there is no evidence of the alley having been open for public access. That's simply not supportable. He has not found any evidence. That doesn't mean there's no evidence. He hasn't looked for it. He doesn't want to find it. He does this, he says this again and again, when things have been closed by members of the, by property owners who then come and ask you to abandon. What is being abandoned here is not so much this piece of right-of-way, but the right of the public to continue using this land. One more thing, I don't know how many people are here for this public hearing and for the next two public hearings. But in the past, you usually had public hearings on zoning changes, abandements, and so on, earlier in the meeting. Is that, do some of you remember that? Instead, tonight, when you have a lot of people here, if you're here for the public hearings, could you indicate that? Could you show your hands? You're here for the public hearings? You've had to wait an hour to speak. I really would appreciate it if you would have public hearings on matters important to the public at the start of the meeting before you go through your business.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
A lot of people are not interested in what you had to say about this, that, and also the other thing. So please, either turn this down now or defer it until you have more information, and until most of you who are voting have gone over there and looked at that nice little park. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, your, your video is not going through to, so we're unable to play it on the screen? If you'd like to come up and talk anyway, in spite of the fact the video will not be played?
We could try putting it in front of the camera and see if that's...
Okay, you can try it.
Yeah, well, anyway, that park they were referring to, there was a road bed there at one time. And the bed is still there, but it's not a road, it's grass. And it extends all the way through the park. The park was put there, I don't know how many, after World War II, I guess, in World War II. Well, here's my truck. It's parked out there. I'm showing you now where, it's sitting on what would be the road bed, but it's actually just grass. And if you go around there, these Tuckers used to live on that west side. Billy Tucker, if anyone remembers him, he was in Iron Lung for many, many years. That's where I grew up, across the street. And I've come home now after being away for 20-something years. And I find a sign out there saying, we want you to abandon this roadway. Well, the roadway hasn't been there for years. It's just turned into the park. People did go through there many, many years ago, but it's not up for someone else to come and say, well, I'm taking that land now. I'm going to put up a bed and breakfast. There's a family homes in there, single family. This is not for a bed and breakfast place to come in. That roadway right, well, I guess that would be the roadway, but it just looks like it's grass, and it looks like it's the rest of the park.
And it sure looks open to me.
Well, I'm coming around, I can't know exactly which way. I think that's where the lady's house is to the right. I'm not sure what that is. But anyway, Anguilla borders, that would be the northwest side, and Ashantilly on the other side. Like I say, there was a road that went, connected the two, but it hasn't been used in more than 20 years. It's just reverted to the rest of the park. Everyone can enjoy that. Anyone come around and see her house? Well, that's on the, that's on the other side. If y'all remember Billy Tucker, who was in that Iron Lung, his property's right over there. Mr. War, I think, going to sit now. But that, that, that looks like that would be the roadway they're talking about, but it's just, it's grass in the park. No one's used that roadway for, I don't know, forever. All right, that's, yeah, that's the front of my truck.
All right. Anything else, sir?
Yes, yes.
Good video there.
Well, it's a video, but it didn't come in very clear. But anyway, I'm against rezoning in any way, because I know, I feel like I know what's going to happen. They're going to put a bed and breakfast in there, from the rumor I've got, and rent it out that way. This is not, it's not a bed and breakfast place. It's a community, and the community uses that entire park. So don't let them do that.
Ronnie, did you ever hit the golf balls in that park?
I did, when I was a little kid. That's where you hit the golf balls out there. Softball, too. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others, anyone else in opposition? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Anyone else wishes to speak in opposition? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments or questions that you have for staff, or any comments or questions for other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the county attorney one more time, because I've heard land grab and, and taking something, but if I remember correctly when we started, 25-foot of this belongs to one property. It was actually part of their property in the very beginning. And the other 25-foot would go to the park. So the park is gaining 25 feet, and I, I don't see it as a land grab. It's, it was theirs, if I, if I heard you right.
That's correct. Can we blow that, that blueprint up? Is that possible? So commissioners, this is, this is the original blueprint plat for the neighborhood, as it was depicted in the 40s. Is that right, Paul? Is that, is that where this is from?
Yes.
1942. 1942. So as you see, as it was plotted, and it was plotted with that circular turn right there, and as we know right now, in reality, that's not there. That is, is, looks like it's part of the park, but it was plotted as a pass-through between the park and those, those properties. So that is the area that you're actually being asked to look at and say, is that something that the county has the utility for, to use as, as intended? As it was originally plotted out like that, is that the desired continued use by the county? If the answer is no, then you don't...
You're on the wrong side. That's on, if we're looking at it down on the south end of that map we've got there. You're up there, all that property to the top left.
This, this is...
That was owned by my father, all that up in there, that was owned by my father.
Yes, sir, this is the park, and this is the, this is the right-of-way that's being requested to be abandoned.
Now, all that in there now is just grass. It looks like the park. You can't distinguish the road bed in there.
Yes, sir. If we're, if we can let Ms., the county attorney continue, I'd appreciate it, sir.
So on the ground today, it probably looks pretty seamless, like it's part of the park, and you can't tell where one, other than it being staked, where one ends, the other begins. But the utility of this whole plat, it shows you that was intended to be a 50-foot right-of-way. So when the Board of Commissioners looks at abandoning its rights to this, again, the county does not own the road bed. It's not the owner of it. We're not talking about the county is selling or giving up ownership rights in it. All the county is doing in an abandonment, in any abandonment, where you have the right to use it for road purposes, you are relinquishing your right to use it as a road. And that's all you're doing. You're not determining, you're not the arbiters of ownership after that, although we know who the owners are. But we're not the arbiters of that. We are simply, the county would simply be saying, it no longer has the, even if it had been opened up as a road in the past, you're looking at this point forward, what is it today, and does the county still need it for right-of-way purposes? If the answer is, is yes, you still need it, that's one answer. For instance, if it's continued to be used as a right-of-way for, for traffic ingress and egress by the public, by the neighborhood. If the answer is no, that also leads you to a different answer. But I think you have to separate out the park, which you see there, from the right-of-way. We're not, the county's not being asked to relinquish park property or acquiesce rights to the park. It's simply to the 25 easterly feet of that immediately adjacent to the applicants. That's all you're being asked to, to relinquish right-of-way rights to, or determine that it no longer needs to be used for public right-of-way.
And in essence, we are, we are increasing the size of the park.
Well, it, the western 25 feet remains what it looks like today, which is part of the park. It's still technically an unopened right-of-way, but for purposes of just the public generally, it'll continue to look like it's part of the park. And that will remain there. That is not being abandoned.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to deny the application, and I'll tell you why. The current owners of each property are not impaired in the rightful use of the property that they have. They're enjoying the privilege of using that property. It has been used since the 40s. It's just an odd thing, when I was eight to about 13-years-old, I went to Mr. Billy Tucker, who lived on that property, to clean his yard for him for extra money and learn how to play chess. I'm very familiar with that piece of property.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, I just don't feel that there's any advantage to, disadvantage to the present use by the owners. I do feel that there's a disadvantage to the community that uses that park. Increasing the scope of that property opens it up to a lot of issues, so that, that would be my motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig to deny the abandonment. Do we have a second? Mr., I'll go ahead and offer a second for Commissioner Fendig. I will second that motion. So we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig to deny, a second by myself. Those in favor of denying the abandonment, please raise your right hand. All right, that's two for. Those opposed to denying the abandonment, please raise your right hand. That's five. So the, the motion to deny the abandonment fails. Is there another motion to be presented?
I've got a, I've got a quick question. And the people that have come over, up and spoke about this, and I've lived here all my life as well, and I've been out and looked at this property numerous times since, you know, this has come before the commission. The park, from what I understand, is not going to be interfered with in any way. The park is still going to be the park. You still have access to the park. And the road, from what I can look at, and I've looked at this road all my life, and I'm 67-years-old, has, has no access to it. There's, it's a dead road. It has no purpose. No one uses this road. No one has, has used it in, in my lifetime that I can remember. And I don't see a need that we should deny this, this proposal. So that's just my opinion. I mean, you're talking about, the feelings that y'all, that I'm hearing is, well, we're going to lose the park. Well, I don't see how you're going to lose the park. The park's not going to be impacted by this.
Excuse me, no comments.
What your comments are, are that you still have access to the park, you still can use the park, you still can get to the park. You, you never really used the road, and the county doesn't use the road, and the county didn't own the park. The park's owned by, I guess, a developer of the park a gazillion years ago, and it's not maintained by Glen County. So...
No, I think it is. Quiet, please. Do I have a motion by any other commissioner regarding this abandonment?
If there's a motion to be seen, I would, I would make a motion.
I move to approve the abandonment of the portion of the unopened Ashantilly-Anguilla Avenue right-of-way in the King's Terrace subdivision as shown on the attached abandonment application.
I second.
Got a motion to approve the abandonment by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Thompsonson. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Motion passes 5-2. Item number 12, public hearing, land use. ZM 4909, Nick's Lane Housing Rezone. Request to rezone parcel 0313146102. Request to rezone parcel 0313146102 Nick's Lane and 166 Grantville Nick's Lane from Forest Agricultural Zoning District to Medium Residential Zoning District. The proposed use is duplexes, two-family dwellings. Jessica Rick, I'm sorry, Jessica Vick, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Hillpoint LLC owner, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. We're opening the PowerPoint now. It's right where it needs to be if we can just start the slideshow. Again, this is a zoning, rezoning request for the name Nick's Lane Housing. This is 1.02 acres, currently zoned forest agricultural, and the proposed zoning is medium residential for four duplex buildings. The comp plan calls this character area the Spur 25 Commercial Corridor. The applicant's requesting to rezone to be able to construct four duplex-style buildings that will have eight dwelling units. The site is owned by Hillpoint LLC, the owner of the adjacent Beverly Villas Apartments and the Altama Office Complex. There is currently a mobile home on the site as allowed, but it's no longer occupied. The current plans for this multifamily site are for it to be a standalone site and not part of the adjoining Beverly Villas project. This is the zoning map, and you can see the parcel identified, along with the adjacent Here's the proposed layout of those four duplexes. The Planning Commission considered this item at its February 1st, 2022 meeting, and voted six to zero to recommend this to you all to be presented, to be approved as presented. Here are your possible actions for this item. This is a public hearing. I'm available if you have any questions. Jake Hightower, the agent, is available if you have any questions.
Commissioners, before we start the public hearing, do you have any questions for Ms. Thompson? If not, we'll begin the public hearing. Those that.
Oh, I apologize, Chairman. It's Wesley Franks. It's not Jake.
Those in favor of, speaking in favor of this proposed rezone, if you'd like to come forward to speak in favor?
Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks with Robert Civil Engineering. We prepared the zoning application that is presented for you tonight, and I'm here in support of the zoning application as presented, and here to answer any questions that you may have on it.
Thank you, sir. And anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? If not, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. Any of those who wish to speak in opposition of this rezoning? Any who'd like to speak in opposition of this rezoning?
I'd love to, but I don't want to.
Well, thank you, sir. Seeing there's no one to speak in opposition, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the proposed zoning decision as recommended by the Mainland Planning Commission on February 1st, 2022.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. All in favor of the rezoning, please raise your right hand. None opposed, the motion passes 7-0. Item 13, TA 4763, Building Height Ordinance Amendment. County initiated request to amend the Glen County zoning ordinance to revise Section 301, 502, 715.5, parentheses, 6, to change the definition of building height to set maximum height at 35 feet for buildings on property with frontage on Ocean Boulevard on St. Simon's Island, including those in zoning districts with a higher maximum, maximum height, to change the maximum height in village mixed use to 35 feet and for other purposes. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Commissioner Fendig and the Board of County Commissioners has initiated this proposed amendment. It would be a change to the definition of building height that would be applicable county-wide and to set a maximum height limit in certain areas of St. Simon's Island. So, the proposal has been reviewed by the Islands Planning Commission and the Mainland Planning Commission. It would change the definition of building height, set the maximum height at 35 foot for buildings on property with frontage on Ocean Boulevard on St. Simon's Island, including those in zoning districts with a higher maximum height, to change the maximum height in village mixed use to 35 foot and for other purposes. This is the actual language for the record and for your information. This was presented to you in your packets. This is the red line so that you can see what is changing. This is an illustration actually provided by Robert Ushry for what these changes mean. You saw this at a work session, and the Mainland Planning Commission members saw this during their consideration. This is a map. All that kind of mid-pink area is the current village mixed use district on St. Simon's Island. This is Ocean Boulevard, Mallory to the East Beach Roundabout. The highlighted area is where this height limit would apply, and it's that kind of pink, beige-y color. On December 14th, 2021, the IPC voted four to one to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the draft amendments to Sections 302, 502, and 715.5, Section 6, presented at the December 14th meeting, rather than the original draft that was presented for their consideration. The Mainland Planning Commission held their public hearing on February 1st, 2022, and in a four-two vote, the MPC recommended to the Board of Commissioners to deny the proposed amendments. Prior to the denial recommendation, the MPC took a vote to request that the Board of Commissioners incorporate these code changes into the current envisioned Glen zoning update. This vote passed six to zero with Chair, Vice Chairman Boatright absent. The second motion was made in order to take a formal action on the item before you this evening. These are your possible actions to approve the ordinance, approve it with amendments or modifications, defer it, remand it back to the planning commissions, or deny it. That's the end of this presentation, but Commissioner Fendig sent a PowerPoint that he would like to show to the board. Daniel, if you could please bring that up?
Thank you. I just wanna make sure that you clearly and visually understand.
It's the one to the far right, Daniel?
Talked about envision Glen. This draft, when I decided to consider running for commissioner, read through that. I read through the surveys that this commission and previous commissions had sent out, and, and we talked about firing up and getting going on this. Well, a year ago, I asked your permission to go out and move this forward because we're way behind. I mean, we don't have a written code in here. We just have a diagnostic report. But in this report, I just wanna remind you, there are a couple things that whether you do it now, it has a reason why I pushed it out. Main thing it says here for St. Simon's is a reduction in density of approved future residential development is needed so that infrastructure and resources are not pushed past capacity. It also has in here that recommendations to ensure that any new development or redevelopment on St. Simon's does not outpass the capacity of island infrastructure. And you hear me quote that all the time through the roads, and I could go on. But I just want you to see what this does. It reduces density. Nobody else has proposed anything in the last two or three years to reduce density on St. Simon's, and it's just gone full throttle. It restricts the height on multifamily development of townhouses and condos within a couple of these districts. It focuses on creating single-family future development, and it restricts the height of new development in a section of the RR District, and it protects the village character. And that, all that is in that envisioned update. Go ahead, the next one. I wanna show you what maximum density looks like in the resort residential. There it is. As much as it can be built, for all the money you can build it, own it, rent it, foot, foot, setback to setback. So, it does not impact that area. That's been done, that's existing, so that this does not cover any of that. All right, next. But this is what it does provide for. Right now, this is the south end of Ocean Boulevard. Ocean Boulevard runs from the pier all the way out to East Beach, and lot after lot after lot on the south end has been built like this. Full box, just as the ocean side. It does not affect these buildings. In fact, these buildings are protected. If anything comes down, fire, hurricane construction, they can build back. But what it does impact is the other end of Ocean Boulevard, and that's a film clip that hits. I think you dropped down to the bottom. There you go. This is the difference of the experience. And I'm gonna point out something that you need to see as you go down. No property owner, the ones that I've talked to, reached out, has come forth of any opposition. It's a totally different character and density. I'm not going all the way to East Beach, but it shows you the character and density on this stretch that this would protect. But if we don't do something for this section, you can go to the next slide. Right there was a home apartment complex next to it, a home. It's being torn down. When I first came on the commission, Walter and I talked about that. There was a four-unit, I believe it's a four-unit condo going up on there. All that stretched down the rest of the way, where are those cars backing out to? It's not like the rest of the condominiums, they're coming out right, all backing out on Ocean Boulevard. And that's what's gonna happen the rest of the way because there's not access to road. Everything else, if it's built out, and you see the pace of what's happening, it's just going right on towards East Beach, and will continue to if we don't restrict the height. It's gonna be up full dense, and all of those floors and all the cars will back out right on that road. So, thank you. And then one more for the village. I just want you to see the impact of heights that occur. Okay, next. And the protection of the character of the village. You hear me say all the time, I've had the great privilege to travel the east coast of our United States to about every community, and St. Simon's is unique, and we need to protect it. Go ahead. It protects the character. Okay. Thank you. All right.
This is a public hearing. We'll now open it. Those that wish to speak, speak in favor of changing this high, or this building height ordinance amendment, please come forward and speak, state your name for the record.
I'm Robert Ushry. I'm the current chairman of the IPC. When this first came to us, from Commissioner Fendig, there was, there was actually a lot more that was being considered than what you're looking at tonight. It was far-ranging, and at the time, I think that the attitude of the planning commission was, it was somewhat split. There were some areas that they felt like we really did not need, need to reduce the heights. I think it actually went all the way up to the very north end on some of the larger lots that are currently being built to 45 feet. So, we asked if we could make some proposed changes, which we did, and what you're seeing tonight is, is basically a consensus of the IPC. Some things that are, are worth pointing out is, is late as, as late as four or five years ago, and Pam, you might be able to help me. This, the village, for instance, was 35 feet already, and five years ago, or four years ago, for some reason, and I don't know how or why, it was raised. It was raised to 45 feet. Of course, the IPC felt like, like Commissioner Fendig feels, is that the village should be protected. I don't think there's anything in there right now that exceeds 30 feet, let alone 35 feet or 45 feet for that, for that matter. So, I like Commissioner Fendig. We feel like that, that that should be preserved. 35 feet's plenty. That would provide for actually more than what's there now. The other thing it does, or there's, there's two other things it does. One of them, which is, is worth mentioning, is the definition of height. Right now, because of the change that the DNR made with the flood elevations, or I guess I should say FEMA, made with the flood elevations, it's, it's caused a quirk with the definition of height in our ordinance. And so, the rewrite of the definition is, is simply a fix. What, what's happening now is we're measuring height based on the, the freeboard elevation, which is one foot above the flood elevation. And some of you are probably aware, the flood elevation was actually lowered in, in recent times. And so, basically, what we're doing is just making, making the language in the ordinance conform with what is currently being practiced in Glen County. The third thing, Commissioner Fendig had, had the video that I think clearly shows what could happen to the east side of Ocean Boulevard. The west side is already protected. It's already 35 feet. And what, what we're anxious to do, from the, from the area, from the village, to the, well, I guess it goes all the way to the Coast Guard Station, is on the west, on the east side of Ocean Boulevard, is, is to protect the remaining property in there that would, that could possibly be developed. We felt very strongly that that would be a good idea and would highly suggest if, if it's this commission's wish to make that happen for us. Also, just, just, just as an aside, after, after the, after the MPC voted, I did have the opportunity to talk with the chairman of, of the MPC and kind of, kind of went over with her. I was anxious to find out what their take was. They were concerned that they didn't quite understand which properties might, might be affected, and I think they had a lot of questions about the village in particular. And I explained to Ms. Gibbs that, that really there's no, there's no area in the village right, right now that is 45 feet, and as far as, as far as I'm aware, there's no plans for anything being 45 feet. So, again, I think, I think if I had, if, if I had been aware, and I, I should have made the MPC meeting to help explain what the IPC was doing, and then I'd be, I'd welcome any questions you may have. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there any others who'd like to speak in favor of this building height ordinance amendment? Mr. Smith, would you like to speak in favor?
Opposition.
No, oh, you're in opposition to the height ordinance?
Yes, I'm Julian Smith, and I would speak in.
Mr. Smith, I just wanna make sure, this is still speaking in favor of the height ordinance?
You're still one.
In favor.
Does anyone wanna speak in favor? Come on up.
All right, so no one else wants to speak in favor? We'll close the, the, those that are in favor portion of the public hearing. We'll now open those who are against the building height ordinance amendment. You have 30 minutes for this section, five minutes per speaker. Mr. Smith?
Are you ready?
Well, hold on. I wanna make sure I get it right. There you go. You're on the clock.
Tell me when.
Now.
Thank you. I'm Julian Smith, and I'm going to oppose what is before you for several reasons, and one of the reasons has to do with the language used. I spent 40 years, more than 40 years, teaching writing courses, including at several Jesuit colleges and Georgetown University. So, when I read in Section C, on page two of five, Section C, that such non-conforming buildings, non-conforming. that such non-conforming buildings, non-conforming height, such non-conforming buildings damaged or destroyed by fire, flood, storm, or other act of God may be repaired or rebuilt to its original height and original numbers of stories. Now, at the start of this meeting, you invoked the name of God. And you asked for his help, his guidance. And then you made some pretty bad decisions, at least one very bad decision, and a few good ones. And by the way, I thank you, Mr. Fendig. I heard you make two good motions and vote on them. Your colleagues didn't agree, but thank you for that. Anyway, when I read this, went to sleep, and God appeared to me and asked me to come and speak to you and to ask you, why, in the name of God, if there is an act of God, such as a flood, a storm, or a fire caused by God, why you would allow this building to be rebuilt? And I asked her, ma'am, why are you asking me to come and talk to these people? And she said, because you're on TV, dummy. You're on cable, on local cable. Look, I find this language offensive. Now, Mr. Mumford will tell you, act of God is boilerplate. Act of God is a common phrase in tort law, and it should disappear. I would say to you, if you're going to leave act of God in this, then you amend it to include a stipulation that anyone whose property is damaged, his tall building is knocked down by an act of God, that they have to come in with a signed witness document saying that God approves of you undoing her work, or if you like, his work. So, I'm sure you're just going to pass this as it is. But it is, I really wish you wouldn't. Thank you, and good night. I don't even want to stay around for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that deeply theological lesson. Any others who wish to speak in opposition? If not, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Thompson or to each other? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, watching the video that Mr. Fendig put up is very compelling. And while I too want to preserve the nature of the island, I still have a hard time believing that trying to approach this through a height limitation instead of sideline setbacks and footprint is the proper way to do it. The height limitation, if we go setback to setback, side to side, front to rear, we're still creating a footprint that's imposing as any of the other 45-foot height buildings. I would much prefer to see footprint limitations on a property that would stand close to what is on the property as it exists today, rather than look at this from strictly a height limitation. While I agree with Commissioner Fendig that the preservation of the village is important and that corridor of resort residential is important, I agree wholeheartedly in that the manner by which this seeks to remedy it, I think is still questionable.
I'd like to answer that. Robert, if you come back up front.
Yes, sir.
You're an architect. You're a successful architect. You do a lot of properties. Will you tell me what the trend of conversation is that you've shared with me numerous times about the request for development and the impact that height would have by providing extra bedrooms?
Well, I think height is certainly one of the formulas that me as an architect would use in order to maximize what can be done on any lot. And certainly, height is in the formula that would be used to determine the total square footage. So, it is all important if we're trying to reduce density. Height, there's other things that we've just now started discussing at the IPC level that may be closer to what Commissioner Neal is speaking about, kind of in line with setbacks. But it's all part of the same equation. Height, I call it the physics. You know, if you can only build so high, you can only get so many cubic feet in a building. So, I think, and you know, the IPC wrestled with this. We didn't just turn around the ordinance that came before us. We actually talked about it at length and the ramifications it would have. I think what we came back with was very sensible. We did have some pushback from some of the residents. But after we had stated what we thought would be reasonable, they came around as well. At the public hearing we had, I don't think we had any real opposition at all. We had some discussion with the IPC, but I think by and large, the public was aware of what we were doing and was in favor of it.
Mr. Ursery, being that long-term architect, you and I go back about as far.
We did.
We've been around it a long time. But if we reduce the sideline setbacks, would it not discourage any development of high density in that very corridor that we wish to protect? If that footprint is reduced, doesn't that discourage the maximum use and make it not worthwhile for commercial ventures?
Well, I think in the particular case, and I assume what we're talking primarily about is the corridor.
Right.
Right. And not so much the village area. The village is setback to setback, front, back, side. Those buildings occupy the entire lot. So, we're speaking about the corridor. Most of the old cottages are right there as well. So, if we, you know, by reducing the height, we're keeping them in check. I don't think there's any room on those particular sites. And that's all we're talking about. We aren't talking about the entire island. We're just talking about one side of Ocean Boulevard. The other thing that's important to me is just the overall appearance, the aesthetics. I think St. Simon's has had, I think everyone admires our old beach cottages. It's part of the grit, as they say, of St. Simon's, which makes it very accepting. You know, we enjoy that. We like the grit, and the old cottages are part of it. So, I think raising the height would be a mistake. It would change the aesthetics. I mean, lowering the height, pardon me, Commissioner Neal. Lowering the height, raising the height would be a mistake. I think we should keep it the same. 35 feet most of.
Wait, it is 45. You're arguing to lower it to 35.
Right, right. But I'm talking about the existing cottages. I don't want to see those go any higher than they are right now.
And I agree with that. I agree with that. But, and I don't want to belabor this too late into the evening, but we, what is the, when we looked at the video going down the street, what came out to you were the ones that when a property is torn down and a condo complex goes back in, it's border to border, front to back. I mean, yes, it's maybe 45 feet, but the appearance as you impact that street is how close to your face it is and how wide the property is. 35 versus 45 is less of a consideration for me than reducing the footprint so that we maintain those cottages. And I think if it's not economically advantageous for a developer to buy that, tear it down, we don't have, I don't think, any site planners that have come on any teardown and rebuild over there that says, hey, you know, I've got a 60, 70, 80-foot lot, and I'm going to set back certain. Nobody comes inside of those setbacks. And if we want to change and preserve, we need to look at the sideline, the setback versus the height. That's how you're going to control the density better. That's how you're going to maintain the appearance of what is so passionately loved along that corridor. And I just think, and I've argued with Commissioner Fendig since the beginning, I don't think the height is the solution. I'm in support of the preservation.
Well, I think, and again, we, all the things you're talking about now, Commissioner Neal, we have discussed at the IPC. I think in the case of Ocean Boulevard, it's a case of preserving the aesthetics more than anything.
Mr. Ursery, how many?
I think to us on the IPC, that's the thing that we thought was worthy of holding Ocean Boulevard, the east side of Ocean Boulevard, down to 35 feet.
Mr. Ursery, how many, pardon me. Can I ask something? How many, I'll forget if I don't go ahead and get, how many 45-foot structures are in the corridor now?
Well, on the west side, there are none.
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 What about on the east side?
On the west side, you know, percentage-wise, it's kind of hit and miss, I would say, probably about 20%.
Well, let me go back to our lesson in theology here. God forbid, something happens to a 45-foot structure. What do we build back to? If we pass this ordinance, what's the height limit on the east side?
I think, right now, those are grandfathered structures.
So, if we had a hurricane knock the 45 down, we go back up 45?
Right.
Is that right? Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go on now.
And just one other thing that we haven't talked about, and Commissioner, respect to your builder developer. But we're not throwing in the floor equation that is now being invaded ferociously by short-term rentals, especially along that side. Every floor means people inside a building. So, that's what we're being overrun with too.
If I may, just add one comment because it's, well, I'm hoping to bring this up, and it goes back to Commissioner Neal's thoughts and ideas, is there's a ratio, there's something that's used in many communities like St. Simon's, and that's called floor-area ratio. And that's a term that we ought to all be familiar with in the future. It relates to the size of a lot versus the square footage of the property, or heated cooled square footage. So, that's something we're looking at at the planning commission now.
Gentlemen, any further discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment as presented.
I have, excuse me, Ms. Thompson?
I apologize. If I could just real quickly show you the three options you have for motions because they took more than one slide. The Island's Planning Commission actually asked you all to approve the one that was presented at the December 14 IPC meeting. And I say that just because the original one, they modified, and we showed y'all both. So, as presented, and I apologize on the slide language, but if you all want to approve what the IPC recommended to you, it would be the draft amendments to those sections as presented at the December 14 Island's Planning Commission meeting.
Well, I would make that motion. I mean, we flushed it out with the IPC three or four meetings. It's a give and take, but I think it accomplishes what we're really looking to see. So, I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig in order to approve the draft amendments to section 301, 502, 715.5, section 6, as presented at the December 14 IPC meeting. Is that correct? All right, do I have a second? I'll second that motion, Commissioner Fendig. We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner O'Quinn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That's one, two, three, four in favor. All opposed. One, two, three. The motion passes 4-3.
Mr. Chairman, I regret that we didn't have a little bit of discussion there between the motions and the vote. But ideally, I would much rather have seen this roll out with the Envision Glen Plan. And I think it's egregious that that seemed to sit on a shelf.
I can't quite hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking all I can talk.
I know it's loud.
It is, it is, and I'm about brain dead. But ideally, I would have preferred this to roll out with the Envision Glen Plan, which is going to be perfected here in the next few months. I just think that's the way to, you ought to go about zoning stuff. But, and I think it's egregious that this plan is set on a shelf somewhere for a couple of years, COVID, whatever you want to blame it on. But it's time to get that done. And I really would have preferred to have seen that gone out on the Envision Glen Plan. But I think it's something that needs to be done, and so we did it. So, anyway, that's all I got.
I apologize, Commissioners. I did not, I didn't ask for.
I also agree with that.
Yeah, I apologize. I did not ask for further discussion.
That's all right. I would have voted on it anyway, because I think it's important. But I just would like to see it had a little more structure in the process. Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Brunson, that's why I voted against it. I thought we should have waited and brought it out with the other ordinance process.
Again, I'm sorry, Commissioners, I blew that one. But the motion did pass 4-3. Do we have anything for executive session? I believe we do. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have a matter of property acquisition to discuss.
All right, I have a motion to go to executive session.
Motion to go to executive session.
Second. Got a motion to go to executive session for property acquisition by Commissioner Neal, second by Commissioner Tossin. All in favor, raise your right hand. We adjourn to executive session. Mr. Brunson to come out of executive session, second by Commissioner Rafalski and Commissioner Fendig. All in favor, raise your right hand.
My computer.
We have a 7-0 vote come out of executive session. Do we have any?
Two, two motions, Mr. Chairman. One, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes from February 3, 2022, executive session.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously.
Also, make a motion that the Board of Commissioners approve the county attorney's recommendations concerning property acquisition.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fendig and a second by Commissioner Rafalski. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn, a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned.